I saw you heard you earlier. My phone was on mute.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing good now. Councilman, how are you doing today, sir?
Doing good, Mr. Mayor. How are you doing?
Doing great.
That's good.
All right, look like we have a full complement of council. I think we're just waiting on Mr. Carrington to get in. I know he's in the building here. Felicia, if you could reach out to Mr. Carrington and make sure he's got track of time. I know he was doing some last minute adjustments. Thank you.
He said he's logging on now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now six oh one, November the fifth, twenty twenty. This is a special meeting for the Inglester City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. You all will join me and rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Councilman Williams, do you mind giving us a prayer, please?
Sir, let us pray. Father God, we come for this special meeting. Father, we ask that you bind our minds together with love, unity, and strength as we continue to move this city forward. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Mayor Wimberly?
Here at Inglester City Hall.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Here in Inglester in my home.
Councilwoman Watley?
I am up here remotely from my home in Inglester.
Councilwoman Washington?
Present remotely from my home in the city of Inglester.
Councilman Chisholm?
Here, appearing live.
Here in the city of Inglester.
Mayor, we have seven present tonight and we do have one.
Awesome. Moving right along. Previous business?
Previous business is consideration and approval to authorize administration to purchase four Dodge Durangos, one Ford Intercept, and one Ford F-150 to amend the budget as follows as duly noted, and this item needs to be removed from the table.
What's your pleasure? So move, Mr. Chair. There's support?
To move, for. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I feel so moved, but I'll support.
Okay, and this is to remove that.
Who is, who is that?
It's moved by Councilman Shaw, supported by Councilman Williams.
I couldn't hear anything.
This is to remove the previous business from the table for discussion.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yay.
All right, perfect. All right, so we want to move this item from the table, but also too, you know, and City Clerk, you helped me along with the city attorney as it relates to this item because the vehicles are in question or not at the dealership anymore. They're actually been sold. The dealer has sold those vehicles. And we're actually looking to do a budget amendment for fifty thousand dollars in the budget for police cars, giving us the ability to be able to buy three police cars. So this is kind of a mute point. So what, what, what do we need to do here?
Um, well, the item, are you going to table the item? Is it going to be moved to new business? You can make a motion to move it to new business up under the budget amendment. So are you bringing it back at a later date?
Yeah, well, you know, again, you know, it's like we put the cart before the horse. So now we didn't table this so many times, but we should actually had the amendment done in the budget for the monies. And then, of course, the administration go out and get the vehicles. So, you know, like right now, again, like I said, you know, talking to the dealership, these cars have been sold. So they're gone. So those are mute point. Plus, the administration, I'm looking through the budget, realized that instead of a hundred thousand, fifty thousand would be appropriate for us to be able to look at two hundred thousand for the next four years. Fifty thousand dollars a year for three police vehicles and then working on a fleet management program to be able to look at what we have as it relates to the vehicles. I sent out a list to the council today of all the vehicles that we have. As you can see with the fleet, most of the vehicles are over a hundred thousand miles. Also too, unfortunately, the, the, the police union has put in a grievance as it relates to the cars being unsafe and over a hundred thousand miles per their contract. We want to look at, you know, at least purchasing three vehicles. Darren is on the line now, so I wanted to make sure that is there something that I don't want to put the cart before the horse again. So do we need to just X this item as a whole, get down to the amendments, and then go from there? Or what should we do?
You're on mute, Mr. Carrington.
Thanks, Felicia. I'm sitting here talking. I realize I was on mute. So this amendment here should probably be dealt with because it essentially deals with additional funds. Everything else we're dealing with tonight is primarily tied to funds that have been appropriated or funds that have some grants tied to them. So they, they, they don't have an impact on the general fund. So for this, we would be amending it so that it just provides fifty thousand dollars for vehicles within the police department's budget.
So is that an action that we need to take with the, at this time, the previous business or in the amendment itself?
However, however, however you want to, want to choose. I mean, this amendment can be revised to, to so that it's, it's instead of the hundred thousand, it would, it would provide fifty thousand dollars in funding.
Okay. Any questions about that from the council? What's your pleasure?
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
I'm not going to make this statement, okay? Because I know how it is when we got, when we, when we got so many, so many cars that we have and then I think the chief spoke last time about how many cars we had already on repairs and various things like that. And when we went there and we discussed that we was going to take them cars and spread them over four years, which is ninety eight thousand dollars, which is okay, which was ninety eight thousand dollars to put four new fleets, well, putting more than just the four on, on the line. So we was kind of like, all that money that we've been putting out into for next year, we've been putting out for repairs, we were going to save all that because every car that we would have, the cars we would have had would, would have been for, been under warranty. Okay, so now to go there and talk about just buying them and see, right now, as I understood, that most of all the vehicles that we have is now are old vehicles. Besides the ones we, we picked up before, okay, they're old vehicles. And then there, a lot of them are going to, to the shop for repairs. Okay, so now we're going to sit up and we're going to eat up fifty, sixty thousand dollars, fifty, sixty thousand dollars in repairs, which we wasn't talking about ninety eight thousand dollars for all, for all of the vehicles. For ninety eight thousand dollars, we could save that in repairs. The only thing I want to bring to this table, you know, being wise, you know, and then we got four years where we don't have to spend any money, okay, for maintenance and repairs on because all them cars that we would have would be, would be under, under, under warranty. So, I mean, I think we're getting ready to throw away some bad money. But I mean, you know, you know, we trying to trying to save every dime we can, but there are a lot of times it costs you more than what, what you trying to save. And then, you know, I won't get off until, I wouldn't get off until, there's a whole lot of things that we need to really come together and discuss. Because, you know, we, we, it's our first responsibility to make sure that we're making it safe for the people of this community. So, you know, and then, okay, and I hope that this is the last time because see, I think, Mr. Mayor, when we getting ready to have a budget revision, a budget amendment, you know, everything should be laid out on the table, you know, and the way this budget came to us last time, asking us for the amendment was not right. And I'm just going to say that, and I'm through with it.
Well, I'm sorry, Councilman, what was the, you were saying about the last budget?
The amendment budget that you brought to us was not right. You bought it that Friday. We had no time to review it. We had no time to ask questions. You know, and I understand you're leaving, but the thing about it is, when we say we was coming back for revision of the, of the budget, we should have had a budget revision, a, a meeting to review the amendments and, and revising the budget.
Are you talking about in January?
I'm talking about now.
Okay, yeah. And I mean, this, this item specifically. What's that?
You shot us a bunch of figures, okay, okay. A little time that we had to ask questions about the figure that you, you shot us, okay? Okay, that ain't the way that I, I figured it. I mean, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but that ain't the way that I figure we should be doing when we talk about amending the budget. There's certain items we should have been told is overrun, certain items that we should have went back and been able to.
And we're not, we're not trying to present those to you tonight. This, this was specific, this, this item was brought to you before.
Okay, all right, well. But I, I think, I think we throwing bad money out the window. I, I think we got to go on and get the cars and, and, and improve their fleet and try to do something with it. To go there trying to, you know, save a few dollars. You're talking forty eight thousand dollars. You're talking about saving, okay?
But Councilman, at this point of order, you can, you can call for the question because the question is on the table. You can call for the question. If you get support, you go for a vote. If you voted up, great. If you voted down, then great. Either way, we can move it forward at this point.
What do we vote now, though? What is the question?
Well.
The question is the three cars, right?
Well, and, and, and again, just so I'm on the same page and I'm trying to make sure that we're putting this forth in the right manner. This was previous business as relates to the ninety eight thousand dollars for the six police cars. And, and that's a total of three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the next four years. So ninety eight thousand dollars a year will cover the six police cars. That was previous business. Since then, and this matter's been going on for about a couple of months now, since then, the cars are no longer available to us. We looked at the budget. We heard from council. We heard from the general public as it relates to the monies itself overall. And I get each comment that's being made, and we're trying to meet in the middle from administrative point to the council's point. Of course, ultimately, the people's point and making sure that we do what, you know, is fiduciary, our fiduciary responsibility. And at the same time doing, making sure we're, we're staying safe. So you, you can steal if, if the money's available, and that's the thing, you know, ultimately, we, we need to figure out, we know that already Darren had presented us to where we could actually do a hundred thousand dollars for this year, but next year we would have to actually, you know, the police would have to amend, you know, of course, in their budget would have to make sure that they had a hundred thousand dollars there each year. So we felt that fifty thousand was something that we knew that was attainable to be able to put, and that's what Darren spoke to and also to Brian from Plant Moran spoke to at our last budget meeting that we just had on the twenty eighth, I believe it is. That we had our budget meeting. So that's what we were putting forth today. Now, Councilman Williams just said, why go back and forth? Put the hundred thousand up today and buy the six police cars? The question is on the table. If he wants to pose the question, he has the right to do that as a council person. He has support. Then, you know, of course, you know, that, that's what I'm saying. So we can move this issue forward either way.
No, but put the rest of the part that I said, Mr. Mayor. I think it need to be brought to the table. I'm saying with, with the money that we are spending right now in repairs, okay?
Yes, sir.
You know, we talking pennies when you, when you talk from fifty to fifty to ninety eight thousand, that forty eight thousand dollars you trying to save, it's going to cost you more than that. And I'm, I'm going to keep a track of it for you to see. It's going to cost you more than that.
Oh, I totally agree. I'm just trying.
And what I'm saying to you is to go ahead and get the fleet and go ahead on and make sure that they take good care of the fleet. I mean, then we can run and catch up with what we're talking about. You know, forty eight thousand, forty eight thousand dollars right now, it's not going to make or break us in this city.
It will.
No, it won't, no, it won't. You know, see, that's what I didn't want to get into, okay?
Well, that's what I'm saying, Councilman. You can call for, you can call for the question. If you get support, then you, you go, we go to a vote and then we can move it forward.
Before he called for a question, is it still upon the discussion or does he have?
We, I thought we, I don't know. Everybody, hold on one second. Let's, let's hear from. Yes, please.
Mayor, I'm sorry. It's been removed from the table. That's the, and you, you're in discussion, but it needs to be reread to be into the discussion part of it, and then you can do whatever changes you want to do to it or whatever. Me to go ahead and read the actual item as somebody makes that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Consideration, since it has been removed from the table, it is now a consideration and approval to authorize for the administration for the purpose of four Dodge Durangos, one Ford Intercept, and one Ford F-150 to amend the budget as follows with the following GL codes to reduce by fifteen thousand the police department budget for vehicle maintenance and repair and reduce by sixteen thousand the police department budget for prisoner maintenance.
What's your pleasure?
Okay. I don't understand. Can we, can we amend it at this point?
You need a motion and then you need a second. And then if somebody who makes the motion wants to amend the motion, they can do so.
Gotcha.
Before, before we go on to this, how can you put a motion on the floor for specific cars? Is this the specific cars that they going to get now? This is going to be twenty twenty ones, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty ones? So how can we put a motion on the floor for the same cars that they had and it was already sold? So I don't understand that part.
Exactly. I, I totally agree with you because the cars aren't there anymore. So if anything, it'll be for the ninety eight thousand dollars for them to get.
For ninety eight thousand dollars.
Correct. Yep, correct. So that should be the motion.
How much? I'm sorry.
The motion should be with, with, without the actual vehicles themselves. Because the vehicles don't even exist anymore. So the, the motion should just be for the ninety eight thousand dollars in expenses.
Okay. So it will still be for six cars, correct?
Right, correct. But you still now, it, it's come, again, it's before you all, so we need a motion and support. And if it's, if it's not a motion and support, we, we can't have discussion to make any amendments or anything from there. Is there a motion?
I move, Mr. Chair.
Is there support? Is there support?
I'll support.
All right, there is support. So question? Question, Councilman Shaw?
Now, when you, now, when you made, when you made the, made mention about the fifty thousand, that'd be for three, that'd be for three cars. Now, I might be repeating myself because you, you're going in and out in this recording. But for fifty thousand, we get three cars. Now, as looking at your, your roster, is there any way that for the other three cars, we can rotate them out from those administrative cars?
And that would be, that, that, that would be, that would be to the, that would be to the police department. Once we, if we decide to allow, you know, them to get new cars and however, that's up to the police department to rotate those vehicles as it relates to, you know, what they need for their daily operation. You know, I'm not trying to necessarily be the police, but of course, that's a good suggestion. So, you know, however, you know, I don't know what they run every day and how they run. So, you know, that's a, that's a whole nother. We're getting into a whole nother ball of wax outside of, you know, us saying yes or no to amending the budget and giving them some money to buy new cars.
Well.
Like, definitely make that suggestion for sure.
It, it's, it's important because we talking about getting them new cars, and then if we go to the budget for the next year, we don't want to come back and we land our police officers either.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree. And that's why we said, you know, fifty thousand versus fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand. Just so, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be making that commitment for a hundred thousand for the cars without actually looking at it and seeing exactly what the tracks are. If we know we're saving money, the money's going down. However, you know, as it relates to maintenance and vehicle costs, we're then coming back for next year. And then, you know, within the budget, you know, the, the administration acts for, from through the police department, of course, monies to be able to buy more police cars. So that, that's where we're at right now.
Because, Mr. Chair, I understand that we definitely need the cars.
No doubt about that.
There's no question about that. That's not the question. You know, the thing is, is that we, we have to come somewhere in the middle so that we can give ourselves the flexibility that we would need for that next year's budget. So we still have to have some forward thinking, you know, concerning that next year's budget. Now, I'm all for the middle. I'm, I'm all for the middle because that still gives us flexibility. Now, we definitely want to meet the needs and have the safety is most valuable to me. And that's why we need this millage on the ballot. But we want to definitely make sure that we can sustain ourselves and be, and be responsible for, for purchasing these vehicles. Now, you know, it's, it's unfortunate we have to come to this and have this type of public meeting. It's really embarrassing to have our cars, you know, broken down on the roads and what have you. But we still, you know, it's unfortunate it wasn't no priority for, you know, you know, in the past. And we have to come to this road now. So I'm, I, I am a middle person, you know, just to be in responsible to the public.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir. Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm going to piggyback off of my colleague. I think at this time, that the fifty thousand dollars will be sustainable to get three cars. As it relates to our budget going next year, it's, it's looking rough. And I'm, and, and like Shaw said, I don't want to buy six cars and then have to turn around and lay some people off because it's, it's looking rough. So I think that I will go with three. And also too, I will go with three road cars. They would have to be on the road.
Yes.
And then, and then the car stays here, you know, so each, each officer, whoever can take these cars and, 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 you know, during the work hours. But that's what I would do, just to be on the safe side because I'm not sure how long it's going to take to order these cars, but I think that we would be playing on the safe side. I think we should just get three, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please, Councilman Williams.
I, I think you're looking at, you're looking at the point of, of save, saving forty eight thousand dollars a year. But you got to realize that, okay, if you get these three cars, the other cars that you got is, 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 is breaking down and the maintenance cost that you're going to have on. That's what I'm saying is, and then number one, if I got, if I got these cars on the road, okay, you mean to tell me if I put all these cars out here on the road, what we have, and, and we can't make additional forty eight thousand dollars, then something wrong. Okay?
It is our budget.
Well.
Our budget is something wrong.
Shouldn't have to come from budget. I mean, if you got, the way they speeding up and down these roads and stuff like this and the protection that the people want, you know, and no, and no random reason that we can sit there and say we, we're not going, we, we're not going to make additional forty eight thousand dollars, okay? But I'm, I'm, I'm going to leave it like that because the simple fact is, you understand, when you talk about everything that you break down, that, that's going to cost you, okay? But when these cars came in, the new cars came in, all of them is under warranty. We can, we can run for the next, what, what they give you on warranty, about two or three years, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, three years.
Okay, you get three year warranty on that. That mean you don't have to pay no maintenance on the cars that you have there. That, that's a saver. That's, I bet you that's going to be a good forty, fifty thousand dollar savings right there. Okay, so I'm just saying is, you know, I know how it is, you know, you got a budget at home, but I'm just going to go and buy about four pieces of meat that'll last me for a week. Okay, but then if I go down here and get this buck meat, I, I can spread it out and then get me three or four months out of it. That's the only thing I'm saying. Hope you can capitalize that.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, Councilman Chisholm.
All right, so just for the record, I don't think anybody up here is saying no to any police cars. I think the whole way this all started out, and you have spoken on this, is talking about putting the cart before the horse. We know, and I know, and definitely that the car, police need cars. I've written in them. I've been on the police ride. I see the cars. I talk to different officers. I completely understand. The only thing that came before us with everybody that I believe, I'm going to say some of us, I'm not going to say everybody because I can't speak for everybody, had an issue with was the budget item, and the amount of money that we were getting ready to spend in the process that was brought before us. At this particular time, it's changed. And you, and you've mentioned three cars instead of the original language that was there. So that was a little kind of confusing tonight, and it was a little surprise real quick that we went to three cars instead of talking about six again. But three is fine. We have Plant Moran here, Plant Moran here. They told us that they could see us doing two cars without breaking the budget. So some of us were okay with modifying how many cars we were going to, to do. And we talked about staggering the purchases. When you talk about a three year warranty, don't put it out there that it's three years because it's three years or mileage. It could be thirty six thousand miles. Our police could do that easy. I could put thirty six thousand miles on the car one year and it's no longer under warranty. So we do need clarification on that. And so when you talk about that, so if it's no longer under warranty after a year, you still incur those charges on repairs. And when we're talking about these savings and things of that nature, we're talking about stuff on the back end. We're not talking about upfront savings where we would be not spending as much right out the gate. And my whole thing too with the fifty thousand dollars that we were asking for out of the grant, out of the public safety grant, which is fine for this first year. But the following three years is the additional monies that we're talking about. Where's it going to come from? A grant is not concrete. A grant is if they grant it to you. So if anything happens where we apply for a grant and they do like the state of Michigan did this year with all these supplemental grants to the communities and COVID hit and they snatched it back, we have to absorb that out of the general fund. So those are our concerns, or at least my concerns, was looking at the longevity and sustainability of this budget for the city of Inglester. Because if we go out and we just push through and we get all six cars, for instance, and say, oh, great, we good, we got the six cars, and then we have a budget issue in the future, and we talking about laying our officers off? If you think the union is on our head and on our back now, and the community is on our head and on our back now, people had a whole police department coming over here. And where are you going to start from cutting, from the top down or the bottom down? Because if it, look, if it's that big of a deal and we talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars a year on cars, well, then you got administrators who make ninety eight or something like that. You could just cut an administrator and then boom, problem solved. And if the police department was really bringing in revenue like that, problem would be solved. We wouldn't even be having this issue right now. However, the whole thing with the cultivation centers and the monies that they were supposed to be donating through the foundation, the intent of that was to hire a police officer and a vehicle at a hundred thousand dollars per person. So the mayor did mention that we had the check coming the other day. So if that money is coming through, we're good. If y'all got the check, show it tonight. We good. I don't have an issue with the two or three cars that we're getting ready to purchase. But it seems like it was going left again for no reason when we just need the language or the motion stated on what we're going to be purchasing and where the money is actually coming from. Because like I said, it got kind of confusing again with it going from what we were initially asking for, for six cars and ninety eight thousand dollars a year versus three cars, and we only need the fifty thousand right now. And that's, that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, so it won't be any confusion. Again, we've been hearing this for the last two months, and you guys have all said that you want to meet in the middle. So that's why I said three cars at fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand and ninety eight, uh, uh, six cars at ninety eight thousand. So let's make sure that we're clear on that. So it's not confusion. I just want to make sure that this is what we're asking for because we went to the administration. I talked with the. So it's not confusion. I just want to make sure that this is what we're asking for because we went to the administration. I talked with the chief. I had Lieutenant Torsik on the line tonight and talked with the treasurer, heard your concerns as the council, heard the community's concerns. And I wanted to put it before at fifty thousand, two hundred thousand over the next four years at fifty thousand dollars a year. So we, it's no confusion in that because that's been the general consensus of the entire council. Unless we call for the vote right now at a hundred thousand and see what we get. All right then. So um, now I know the maker of the motion, you, you, you had the motion. The motion is for ninety eight thousand for the, the next four years. You can, the, the, you got support on it for discussion. Everybody said what they needed to say, I believe, unless somebody has something else to say. Lieutenant Torsik is on the line tonight representing the police chief um in the, in the department. But uh, you, you know, I would say we call for the question. If we want to amend the question, let's do it at this, at this time or what, what, what's your pleasure?
Oh, well, I will, Mr. Chair, I would rather amend the question, but I'm not the maker. So amend the question to be on agreements with everybody to be, just get three cars at fifty thousand dollars. Um, and that would, you know, and going forward, if we have bring in more money, then that's more cars that they can get. But to be on the safe side, I think fifty thousand would be, it would be on, it's the same, it's in the middle. So I don't know, I'm not the maker. So the maker would have to, I think the maker would have to.
Yeah, what happened, man.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, some be, some be none. So, you know, I, I, I go for that. That's what everybody want to do. But I still want to say, I, I just uh, with something else on there, how we gonna get, how we gonna get uh three cars with fifty thousand dollars? I mean, we, we.
Well, so it's, it'll, it'll be a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. So it's over four years, fifty thousand dollars a year. So we know that as it relates to, uh, all of your points were very right and valid as it relates to the maintenance costs and making sure we set up a vehicle maintenance plan, we should be able to capture that cost and move that money out of the money that we're spending a hundred thousand a year right now that we're spending for vehicle maintenance. We should be able to move some of that monies around uh within the police budget as they have it right now today. So I'm very confident in that with the fifty thousand. I'm confident in saying that. And that's why I said it from the outset of the meeting. So if you, if you, sir, would, 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 would like to make an amendment, then please do so at this time.
I, I go ahead and make the amendment to get the three cars. I mean, they need the cars and we, we're gonna have to discuss it down the road some other time.
Yes, sir. Is there, is there support? Is there, there's support for that?
Support for, for the amendment of three cars. Yes, I support it.
That's patrol cars and we'll make that clear in this, uh, city clerk and.
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on that? Here in the roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Watson?
No.
Mayor, we have five yays and one nay.
All right, motion carries. Moving right along. Thank you.
Item A under new business is consideration and approval for the FY uh twenty budget amendment.
All right, Mr. Carrington.
Yeah, so um, we had a few items that we wanted to bring to council and, and this kind of partly touches on the, the um, point that I think Councilwoman Williams was getting to uh as it relates to budget amendments. At the last meeting, we discussed, you know, the administration would be coming back in January, once we had the audit and had a chance to get some additional um financial results and bringing forth a budget amendment as we did last year that really deals with specific items that we would be looking to either increase or decrease. Tonight, we wanted to bring, bring some items that essentially uh have either been brought before council or that are uh effectively revenue neutral. Um, for example, we have a couple grants that have been received by the city. Um, they've been uh communicated to council on prior occasion, but we wanted to go ahead and bring these things uh to council so that they can be dealt with. Um, any questions that needed to be asked could be dealt, uh, could be presented. And we could include these in the budget again from the standpoint of they, they're being um benefit, uh, I'm sorry, being uh budget uh neutral as it relates to the, uh, specifically to the general fund. So we're not trying to bring anything that's really kind of altering the budget or, or changing the budget as it relates to new spending or, or um, things that are not fully funded um or have not been presented to council before. So um, and Mayor, I wanted to defer to you. I know we had a couple items that we did want to discuss that are kind of separate from the grant items. One is, is related to the firefighters. Were we um ready to present that item? Cause that, that one's a little different than these items that I have.
Is that part of the budget amendment? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, cause this is a special meeting, so it can only be what was noticed on the meeting notice.
Yeah, that was, that's actually a closed session item. I know that you guys discussed it in closed session, so we want to discuss it in closed session, Mr. Carrington.
Okay, okay. So, uh, uh, okay, so then I've got um uh, two items. One is, is the, is the uh grant from the clerk. Um, and that is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, five hundred and forty six dollars and twenty five cents. That was uh presented probably about four to six weeks ago, if I'm, if I'm correct, Felicia. Um, but we did want to go ahead and, and um formally uh have that presented to council so, so they, uh, that could be acted upon and authorized. Um, additionally, we had a grant um for the police department that was um actually authorized by the mayor during the um finance, during the uh uh COVID emergency. Um, and that was for the amount of eighty two thousand three sixty nine. And we've got some specific expenditures that we wanted to um present to council for that. Now, the thing with the clerk grant, that check has already been received. So there's no reimbursement. That money's already been um uh deposited into the city's general fund. We just need to formally adopt that and allow for the expenditures. The police department grant um for that eighty two thousand three six nine uh is, will be a reimbursement and, and um Mr. Torsik, I think, can speak. Um, can you speak to that and kind of review the um, the items that are being proposed for that?
He's muted. I'm looking for his name. There he is.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Council. Uh, thanks for having me. Uh, the coronavirus emergency grant fund was approximately eighty two thousand dollars. Uh, we wrote the grant and received the money. Uh, what we were purchasing was a vehicle. It's a uh twenty twenty one Ford van uh for the use of transportation for citizens if needed in the, in the midst of this uh COVID uh crisis, as well as uh thirty eight thousand dollars went to overtime, for police overtime, to supplement, supplement the uh budget. Uh, and there's some uh police equipment as well as some uh equipment to sanitize the station and the police cars.
Is there any questions for Lieutenant Torsik? Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Carrington.
Okay, and then the last two items are um, uh, these were grants from the state. And again, we had um presented these items to council at an earlier meeting. Uh, one was a, a grant that was um received for hazard pay. Um, it was in the amount of sixty four thousand dollars to provide a thousand dollar payments to um, public safety employees in the police and fire department. Um, so that again is a budget neutral item. We just want to formally receive that money. Um, that again has already been provided by the state and authorized um the, the additional money being added to the budget to cover for those payments. And, and keep in mind, those payments have been made um, under already earlier appropriated funds. We just want to add that sixty four thousand dollars so that the um departmental uh budgets can stay, stay in line with um the original projection. So we're just, again, formally uh accepting that money from the state and then uh formally um providing authorization of that uh additional expenditure. And then the last item is the um public safety um payroll reimbursement that was also received from the state under the CARES Act in the amount of two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that was previously already appropriated for um the fire department. Um, so that appropriation was already formally adopted by council. Um, we, we want to go ahead and accept, uh, accept that money. And we, at this time, we don't have any additional um appropriations that are being uh presented to council. We, we, we do want to um, just formally adopt that uh, that revenue into the budget.
Is there any questions for our treasurer?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Now. There's no expenditures that was going to be adopted or you saying that they were?
So the expenditures would, for the police grant are um the eighty two thousand uh three sixty nine for the police grant. Um, those, those expend, those are uh expenditures that would also be uh included because that's a reimbursed type of grant. So that, that revenue is only gonna come in um by virtue of the expenses being incurred and us uh seeking that reimbursement. So those amounts um are tied to the, the three items that uh Mr. Torsik just touched upon. Um, namely the thirty four thousand and seven hundred and forty seven dollars for the, the passenger van, the emergency services passenger van. And then about eighty three hundred and fourteen dollars for emergency, um, some emergency radio equipment and COVID uh supplies over at the uh police department. Um, so those are the specific expenses that would be uh tied for the um police department grant. Again, those are being offset, so they aren't gonna have a bottom line impact on the general fund. And then as it relates to the clerk grant, we would be adopting those to uh put some additional monies in our, in our budget to cover expenses um that uh includes, and then these are all things that are uh related to the election, uh some computer equipment, um, personal protection equipment, uh hazard pay that was provided to, to um the employees. Um, but it's all tied to that uh, the amount, in each case, it's tied to the amount of, of the grant. So um we're asking for the, the money to be received and to authorize those expenditures to be made from, from those granted funds.
Okay, so, so, okay, yeah, that's what I want to know. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Just a clarification.
Yes, sir. Councilman Williams?
You mentioned about the eighty seven thousand dollars to, that's a police grant. And you didn't, you was talking about, but I almost mentioned it, something about the fire department you had, you had to give them so much money.
That, that was, that was, that was a separate item, not tied to the eighty two thousand for the police. Um, Councilman Williams, if you recall, um, I believe it's probably la, early sometime last month, we talked about, we have received monies from the state under the CARES Act. Um, we had gotten a sixty four thousand dollars in hazard pay. That's one item that we want to um have formally authorized. Uh, and then there was um a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we, we had gotten two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars for uh reimbursement for public safety. We had an earlier meeting, council had agreed to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money already. Um, so you, you already authorized out of that two sixty seven, you had already added money to the fire department's budget. I was referring to that. But those monies have already been added to the fire department budget for the purpose of providing some salary increases for the fire department. So we're just asking for the um formal adoption of that two sixty seven, along with the adoption of the sixty and the expenditures for the sixty four thousand. The only expenditure coming out of that two sixty seven would be the uh one fifty for the fire department that you've already uh, you've already agreed to and, and authorized that.
Any? Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Carrington. All right, uh, let's call for a question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Apologize. Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carry. Item B.
Um, item B is consideration and approval for the IT company.
Yes, I had an opportunity to um to send you off the RFP proposal for uh IT services. I spoke to each, uh, each council member um individually about that. Uh, Troy, did you have a chance to? Put that up for the general public? So we had seven um companies that um, that put in a proposal for uh IT services for the city of Inchester. And um, we would like to uh entertain a contract with Nerds Express. Um, Nerds Express actually comes to us highly recommended from the city of Detroit. Also Wayne State University, where they uh do a lot of work there. And um, working with uh one, two, three net and uh Vigiline, which is the company that is uh doing our um police cameras. So we had a chance to um kind of vet them out, look them over. They had been working with us for the last couple of weeks in emergency capacity as we do not have an IT director or IT um company at the time. Um, I talked to each of the council members and asked what their thoughts were and everybody agreed um that I should go out for a request for proposal. And uh, we got back seven of them and out of the seven still, uh Nerds Express was head and shoulders above the rest. And plus they were in our price range, um, which is uh roughly about sixty thousand um a year, which uh Mr. Cody was making our IT director. Um, Mr. Carrington, if you could talk about the numbers, I'm not.
Sure. So, so we had um, for the year, we had appropriated sixty seven thousand six hundred for um the I, the position of IT director. That was what was placed into the uh salaries uh category within the information technology department. So we would not be seeking any additional funding. Um, we would be moving money within the department down to professional services. Um, so we just want to, you know, make sure we're transparent. In addition to presenting council with the um information as it relates to the selection of the vendor from a funding standpoint, at this time, we're not seeking any additional funding. We would just be moving money uh within the department. Um, for, you know, specifically from salaries down into the professional services.
Right, thank you so much. Yeah, go ahead, Constable Shaw.
Now, eh, you, when you may mentioned about the, the moving the, the dollars around and saying that it was sixty seven thousand now, you only have about fifty two thousand, right? That's uh, that's unoccurred, that's not spent for that uh.
That, that is, that certainly is correct. So um, the, the agreement that is, as has been proposed is for uh five thousand dollars per month, um, if I'm correct, Mayor. Um, so the, um, so to your point, um, you know, we're not, we would just be moving the, the, the funds that are remaining um from that category. Basically, anything that had, that, you know, had been paid to Mr. Cody within the salaries for this fiscal year, we would take, obviously take that out of the um, uh, already allotted budgeted amount and then move the remainder down to um, down to the professional services. Um, but there would be sufficient funds to um cover the contract as it's currently proposed.
Cause it's like three thousand dollars for professional services, right?
Correct. For, that, that's what was in the um, in the uh original, in the adopted budget, yeah.
Okay, so that'd give you about fifty, what, fifty eight or fifty nine thousand?
Yes, yeah.
So you saying it's, it's not gonna be any more additional dollars that's gonna be needed out of the IT, right, for this?
Correct. So we're not, we're not, we're not proposing any additional funding. We're just proposing taking the funds that were already available and moving them from salaries down into the professional services. from salaries down into the professional services. So we wouldn't be adding anything, and there's no budget request to pro- provide any additional dollars. We're just saying, hey, when we presented this budget for your adoption, we we were you know, we have money in the employer, in employees category for salaries. Now, as we present the proposed vendor, we've gone out for the RFP and we have a proposed vendor. We're gonna need to move those funds down. And so from a transparency standpoint, it's a different, you know, budget structure than what we had initially presented to you. So we just wanna, you know, from a transparency standpoint, let you know, we're not, you know, at this time, asking for any funds. We don't expect to need any additional funds. We're just gonna move what's already been provided.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
Okay, if you, okay, we paid Cody so much money for for the entire year for the budget, right, since he was here. Okay, and we're gonna, now we're gonna pay. How much money have we have paid Cody already? Because we're talking about paying this this person sixty thousand, what is it, sixty thousand dollars a year? So what I'm saying is, well, I know we already paid Cody some money, so how much additional money do we gotta come up with in order to keep this contract?
So, so just assuming this contract is beginning in November. We, you know, so we we had allotted for for about sixty seven thousand dollars for twelve months. So we we have approximately eight months remaining in this fiscal year. At five thousand dollars a month, we would be talking, talking roughly forty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I'm I'm speaking off the top of my head here. So I know we've, we've, we had, for Mr. Cody, we had spent a total of eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand two hundred for this fiscal year, leaving us a little less than fifty thousand dollars. And so that, that's gonna, gonna be enough to cover this contract at roughly five thousand dollars a month.
But I thought I was reading the contract, I mean, maybe, maybe I got it all wrong. I read the contract saying you're gonna agreement for, for sixty thousand dollars a year.
That that's per, that's for twelve months. That's that's based on twelve months at five thousand per month. So since we're, we're in the, we've already got, gone through four months of this fiscal year. We wouldn't need the entire, you know, entire fiscal year to get us to, get us to the, we wouldn't need the entire, we wouldn't need sixty thousand dollars to get us to the end of this fiscal year. Because we only got eight months left, we we would need approximately forty thousand dollars to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
So the contract reads five thousand dollars a month, man, is what you're saying?
Yes, exactly.
It read the way that was, cause I, what I read it was, was sixty thousand dollars annually.
Right, and and that that number was was based on a fi- a five thousand dollar per month estimate.
Yes, and if I can't interject, it is in the contract. And our attorney is on the line right now to speak to that. But it is in the contract at five thousand dollars a month to be paid out. And understand that this is just not, this is one, this is not just one person, so we will have one person dedicated from the company here. But it it comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge and about seven to eight additional people that'll be working with us here in the city of Inglewood. Okay, is there any other questions regarding this item?
Yes, I have some questions. Looking at that proposal, and I'm not fine, I'm not. They don't have a cover letter on here. I'm not looking at what other municipalities have they worked, no. Do you have that? Because we don't have that. Also, too, in here, I'm looking for a twenty four hour service, because we are twenty four hours, that's not in here. So it's a lot of things that's missing out of this, that, I mean, no reference, no, no other municipalities, where they worked. Who they work for. Do you have that with you, and you just didn't share it with us, Mr. Mayor?
No, it is definitely oversight, because I know it was in the package. So let me see here, we do have Mr. Barlow actually on the line right now as well. If we could chime him in.
I mean, he can be on the phone, but I'm just understanding, if you're coming out for a bid, you will put as much stuff as you, I mean, to sell, sell your company, and I don't see it in this proposal.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sure so. It's definitely an oversight, because I have all that information.
Okay.
Let me see if I can pull it up over here, but we do have this on the line if you wanna.
I'm looking at others, other, other proposals that you have, and they break it down seriously, breaking it down, and
Yeah, they were a hundred thousand dollars a year, too.
Well, well, no, but I'm just saying, but your portfolio is what 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 sells a company to me. But I need to know, is this, I mean, is it extra money? If it's, if we gotta call them in the middle of the night, it's nothing in here that's gonna tell me what we need, really.
It does speak to that, though. Where it talks about the sixty thousand annually, then it says seventy five dollars.
Per week, but it doesn't say additional hours billed as necessary. What does that mean? What does that entail?
I mean, that says seventy five dollars.
Well, seventy five dollars, what does that entail?
And we can talk about that, so. Yep, Mr. Mr. Barlow?
Hey, I'm here.
All right, good then. Go ahead, introduce yourself, Mr. Barlow, give them a little bit about your background, your company.
Yes, all right, I hear you, hear me. My name is Dustin Barlow, Nerds Express. Just give you a little about my company, we've been around since twenty eleven or so. We're basically a full-service IT firm. We do everything from networking, phone system, structured cabling, physical security that includes access control, video surveillance, as well as commercial maybe multimedia. You know, to kind of speak on our background, we've, you know, we work with everything from small businesses to higher ed, including Wayne State. We work with other municipalities such as Kegel Harbor, we work with the city of Detroit. We're actually working directly with the city of Detroit, is under master contract now for all the infrastructure needs, as well as, you know, University of Chicago. So we have a pretty vast experience of working with the different cities, as well as, you know, we work with different banks, such as Michigan First Credit Union. Worked the Crown Plaza Hotel franchise. So we have, you know, I I did initially submit it, I'm not sure if it made it through to everybody, but there is a reference sheet with the references for, you know, the, you know, for mentioned, you know, organizations. And in response to the actual twenty four hour support, the way it works that we do projects in addition to standard support, so correct, if it, with it being twenty four seven operation, you know, there's no limit to when you can submit a ticket or when you could call us, we will support, we do have staff on standby. And in, you know, if there's anything that's additional in terms of like project work or additional services. So again, we can, you know, do anything that's needed for the city, whether it's the wireless deployment, to the, you know, cameras, to whatever the needs are from the, you know, courthouse to the police department, we have the skill seventeen that can do it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Hi, how are you? Additional hours billed as necessary, seventy five dollars. Can you explain what that would be?
Correct, so because you're, yeah, so because you're under contract with us, if there is additional services, we discounted our standard rate to seventy five per hour for like, say, for instance, we need to install cameras or something like that throughout the city hall. That's not considered necessarily support, but it'd be considered a project work. So supplemental projects that are at a discounted rate, because you have a support contract with us. So that's not speaking to general support or general IT needs of the city.
So just there, for instance, if 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 something breaks down at twelve o'clock at night, you wouldn't necessarily be billing us a seventy five dollars an hour, it was just based off of the contract we already have with you, you would take care of.
That's considered support, correct.
Gotcha. Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sorry, I was just trying to help out a little bit. You had anything else for?
No.
And then I'll make sure to forward those references, because I know that they were pretty extensive, so. And and like I said, they've already been on the ground in the emergency capacity, because Mr. Cody's been out with us for about a month or so. And we know we were going into the elections, and they've been working directly with the police department and the court. So, you know, when I say that they, they, they are outstanding, they're outstanding. I'm looking forward to bringing them aboard full-time and giving them full access to our system, so they can really help us get all of those things together, where we have one, two, three net. One, two, three net contract is, is, is almost settled, where they're pulling permits to start putting in the infrastructure for us in the city hall. So we need someone to really be able to oversee that stuff, and Dustin already has a relationship with them already, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please, Councilman Shaw.
Now, now, do the, are they gonna be able to be at city hall any days, or?
Every day. Every, every day, yes. They have a live body here at city hall every day, that's part of the contract.
So that, now, have any other department head spoke to them concerning their needs from an individual standpoint or individual department standpoint?
Mr. Barlow, please speak to that, please, sir.
Yes, I've actually sat down extensively with every department head, from the fire chief to the police chief to Chief Judge Anderson. So I spoke with every department head, and I have a running tally of all the needs that they need, and some of the issues we've already kind of resolved on an emergency basis. Specifically in the police department, there are several issues that were already present that I personally actually took care of when I was there, meeting with the the various department heads and the police chief and assistant chief. So we have, I have conducted consultation sessions with each of the individual department heads over the past couple of weeks.
Now, ci- city hall as well?
City hall, I've worked with Ms. Glover, as well as the mayor, directly to see some of the issues. I was introduced from Troy to some of the different people in every department. But we haven't sat down with individuals such as the various clerks and whatnot to see some of their needs. But we have been keeping a running tag, tab on top of our help desk system for any issue that have already been existing in city hall. And, you know, Troy has pretty much sent us those tickets that have been out there, and we put them into our system and kind of work on an emergency basis.
Okay, cause, I mean, I I definitely wanted you to be able to sit down with the city clerk and see the issues that the clerk has.
Sir, let me stop you right there, Shaw. The reason why he has it is because the clerk, and and, you know, I know that we are gonna get to that and and say what a wonderful job she has done, and and the people that she had working with her staff, of course, and the people that she hired throughout the community to work with her on this historic election. She's been busy, busy, busy. So we didn't necessarily want to bombard her with that right now, but she has been in contact with me for any issues and also with Troy for any issues that she would have. And Mr. Barlow has been taking care of those issues. So once this contract is is resolved, then we're going to, I mean, is executed, we're going to make sure that she's one of the first people that he sits down with.
And then also with the the terms and conditions or the terms, is there a set timeframe? You may mentioned that city attorney has looked over it, does he see anything that would injure the city in any way? As far as us not liking the service or extending the contract?
Attorney General, can you speak to that, please, sir?
Yes, good evening. I I reviewed the proposal as produced by Nerds Express. And I incorporated in the draft for their review with our regular terms and conditions that we like to place in most city contracts. And most importantly, I included the standard termination clause, which we call a termination for convenience clause, meaning that if for any reason the city is not satisfied with the services of a particular contract, city has the right to terminate the the contract for its own convenience, subject to paying the contractor any money that's currently doing outstanding. I submitted that to the mayor and administration earlier this afternoon. And subject to those terms, I don't have any issues with city executing this, the agreement as proposed.
Okay, so so it it meets your, it meets your satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Any other, yep, Councilman Chisholm, go ahead.
Yep, I had wanted to know, as far as where it says additional services, seventy five dollars an hour. After that, is that after the forty hours, or is that after, what what exactly? Cause I wanna know, where does that money come from?
That's for supplemental projects, so that can be any type of projects that might arise, such as if there's a, you know, need to add, you know, ten cameras at this location, or we need to install X monitor, you know, anything that's outside of support.
Okay, and and the reason I ask that is because, you know, in the future, we've talked about, even with the police department and those cameras and stuff like that, just add in additional things around the community. So I was just curious as to if that would be, well, now that that's answered, so yes, okay. And I guess with that money, with those monies becoming, I guess, for the treasurer out of the general fund, or is this something that we would have to go out for a crack? Or, cause I know earlier, one of my colleagues asked about, would be, would we be paying additional monies? But in that capacity, as we go into getting one, two, three net, and as we look to expand our network and provide internet to the, to the city overall. Councilman Williams always speaks about residents south of Michigan Avenue being not privy to what others are privy to when we get ready to deploy newer technologies and stuff like that. I just wanna make sure that we're not trying to figure out, okay, well, we said we was gonna do this, but we can't pay for it, so. Well, that's a question I could be, I guess, later. Cause that's, that that does tell me that we'll be paying additional funds when we look to expand our footprint in that capacity. I concur with my colleagues who were desiring additional information as far as the reference page and things of that nature. Also, what the city attorney just spoke on, I don't have any of that information before me. I really don't consider this a full contract, this just states what they can do. It does not talk about how long this contract is for, whether it's one year, whether it's three years, all of that is, is not there. Also, in emergency capacity, I was just curious how much we had been paying them already. And where did that, did that money come out of the IT budget as well? Does that already change that? Was it emergency capacity rate? Was it just a normal hourly rate? Was this the five thousand dollars a month that we already said that we're gonna be allocating to them? And then as far as the clerk's office, I really wish they could have been on site during the elections to see what type of support the clerk needs. Because when the internet went down during the presidential election, you have persons accusing us of voter suppression. It's just, th- this just doesn't seem like a full contract to me. I would ask for more time. I would ask for this to be tabled until we get the rest of those documents and get all of the rest of the questions that we have out before us. It has been a busy week, so I'm not trying to fault anybody for not getting us that information. However, it's been very stressful. Elections are stressful mentally and physically, and I am not prepared to vote on this tonight.
Okay, that's. All right, any other questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Watley.
I'm sort of confused about the process here. Normally, an RFP is sent out. You're requesting us for an RFP. Then you bring the people who have responded to the RFP aboard, and a decision is made, but it seems like that process was just overlooked. The second thing.
That's exactly what we did, and we just did the same thing with the genitorial contract. We put out the RFP, and then we sent you who the administration wanted to hire.
May I spend it?
No, go ahead, but I just wanted to make sure, point of clarification.
Like I said, it it seems to me that it's been backwards. Now, these people have been working for us already?
Yes, cause we didn't have any emergency, so we haven't had any IT support.
Okay, how much money has been expended up to this point with them?
We haven't spent any money as of yet.
So they're not being paid for what they've done up to this point?
Not yet. They haven't invoiced a shit.
Know how much that will be based on the contract that, or the information that you've given us so far?
And if I could just make a point of clarification there, Mayor? So, so in in response to Councilwoman Watley, so we haven't spent any money, but we have incurred, we have incurred some expenses. And so, I mean, I think the answer to your question, we, we would have to get that amount. I don't wanna give you any, any inaccurate information, I, cause I don't have that number in front of me. But as the mayor laid out, Mr. Cody left. We did not have time, obviously, to go through the process that we're seeking to go through right now. So, you know, just operating under the the purchase ordinance and the fact that we do, did have what can consider to be kind of an emergency situation, cause we literally had no one to help us maintain, you know, all the IT services. Um cuz we literally had no one to help us maintain, um you know, all the IT services for the city. We have been um, you know, incurring expenses with uh uh Mr. Mr. Barlow uh and his company. Um you know, we're planning to pay those out of funds that are already appropriated to the department. Um but to date, we don't, we have not actually paid him a check. We, I've actually had a discussion with the mayor's office about that. Um but you know, we have every intention of paying him for the work that he's, that he has been doing, knowing that we have incurred some expenses and we would have to get you that number um in terms of what's been um you know, what what what's the bill to date, even though we haven't paid it at this time?
Um, my point is, is that a lot of things happen out of sync suddenly, or we are given information at the eleventh hour to vote on. I have a problem not being able to peruse information prior to being asked to make a decision. Also, just to reiterate, if you all have expended past our purchasing policy limit, that should have been brought to council. Keep things straight because they have not been. So. Just said, I would be um I would not be able to vote yes on this either tonight. That's it.
Do we have a, the maker of the motion? We move the maker of the motion.
We'll move.
Alright, right, I'm sorry. I'm looking for my um for my sheet. I don't see any maker, but uh.
Okay, so we can table this item. I just didn't wanna have this item on the November sixteenth meeting because we have uh full agenda on the November sixteenth meeting. But we need to have this item back before us. So we will get you all that. We will get you all that information for the November sixteenth meeting. Um I just, again, I stuck this item on here and we followed the exact standard that we did just for the genitorial service. So I wanna be clear on that. Just for the the same, you got the same information that we just gave you for the genitorial service. And you, you were okay with that. And we, 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 we made that happen. So for this, like it's something different, but go ahead. I'm listening.
I mean, we, we, we gotta get, we gotta do something. I mean, we can't keep on putting it off and putting it off because you're gonna be in a situation damn if you do or damn if you don't. So if you, if you bring it forward now and we talk about it, if you bring it forward later, you're not gonna please everybody. You know, one thing is gonna be said is that we don't have no IT person. So then you're gonna get people going around town saying, oh, well, the city uh doesn't have a IT person. Well, you know, we gotta, we gotta get something done and get some people in place, you know, if, you know, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be one of them situations where we don't have a IT person. Well, when, when is the mayor gonna have a IT person? Well, this IT person left. So, you know, I just wanna, you know, i- if if they need, if if some colleagues need some additional information, just make sure that they get that information when it comes out, when you talk about the process. So there won't be no, nobody saying that, okay, well, they didn't get this or they didn't get that. This is what a special meeting is all about. Uh let's have some discussion on it. And if they need some additional information, let's make sure we get it to them because we gotta do something. Or we're gonna be lagging behind and these people are gonna still bill us and we're gonna still be paying our dollars for it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
I got a call, I got a, I got a statement.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
And first of all, um I I realize that, you know, this, it's been one of the things that many of you council people, some of, some of you have said, you know, you, you going around, uh what we gonna do about IT person? What we gonna do about IT person? I personally, um many times, uh about two or three times, I had to get Troy, okay, to to leave the city hall to come in and and set and set the machine up here for me in order to get on 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 uh council. Don't get on, get on the council meeting, okay? Um I've, I've seen a lot of times when we have breakdowns and stuff like that, I've had to see, we had to call on Cody and he wasn't there and Troy had to step in. So what I'm saying is, you know, um maybe the mayor didn't give you all the paperwork that you need to have, but the bottom line is, these people been, they've been facing down for us, okay? And, you know, Mr. Mayor, I hope tomorrow morning that you send them all the paperwork that they need. Okay, but I think the procedures have been stated. The procedures say you went out for bid. Okay, and you made a recommendation. Okay, so I, I don't see why, why we want to table anything. I think we just go ahead and call for the question.
Yeah, go right ahead, call for the question. Cuz what you just said about somebody coming over to your house and doing some of your personal device, that's a favor. That is not paid under the taxpayers or for the city of Inkster. And that's why I'm talking about this contract. If that's included in the contract that they will come out to your home to work on your personal stuff, that's great. But it doesn't say that. That's why you may have.
I didn't say he came over with on my personal stuff.
You, you, you have a sick computer.
Let me, let me explain to you. Number one, okay, when, when I, when I tried to hook up the camera and stuff where I can get online, okay? I had to call on him to set it up where I can get online, okay? Now, if you want, if you want it now, I'm, I'm going back like the sign the one that said, you won't go and get me a lot, get my own equipment and stuff, then that's fine.
But the city should, and that's what Sandra said before, the city should.
I'm sad, but see, he, you know, when they needed help, he came forward. I didn't have to go out for bid.
All right. Yes, I don't have any problem with that. I, you know, again, I wanna make sure you get all the information that you need. Um, you know, just, I, I'm, I'm just trying to move our city forward. And believe me, if I need to, to have the chief judge along with um the, the auxiliary police, I mean, I'm sorry, the uh the the AC uh police off, uh police chief come in and talk to you all about the services that they've gotten and what services we were getting. Um I think you would be alarmed and appalled. So, um yeah, I'm just trying to move the city forward. Um I don't have a problem with, again, um bringing you back to information on uh Monday the sixteenth. Um all the information, cuz I've talked to each council member about this over a month ago. Went out for proposal. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. This is not, nothing is just brand new. Something that we just decided to do today.
And Mr. Mayor? Not, not trying to, um, you know, make it negative or anything like that. It's just what, when we compare IT versus cleaning, those are two different levels of expertise. IT is gonna be in everything from, you know, personal to non-personal. They have those accesses and that's why we ask those different questions like that versus cleaning. Yeah, they might have access to the building, but they can't get, they can't get into the servers and things of that nature for all this stuff. Even, it's even a public safety issue, if you will. Fire and police are on the internet for the city of Inkster. And it has access to everybody in the community's information. The cleaner people do not. They, you know, they won't. And and if the process might need to be corrected, cuz maybe we did the process wrong for maintenance and we just didn't catch it. Sometimes human errors and oversight on our end. So that's something that we can look at as well. So I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. I just, cuz I came from that particular field, and when I worked for a company like that, I was bonded and licensed because I worked for that company and they had did all of their checks and things of that nature. So that's why I just ask about all those different things, cuz I see them. They jump out at me. You know, if you ask Reverend Williams about something in the ministry, he's gonna have different stuff. But if you come over to tech stuff, he's not gonna have it cuz that's not his forte. So, and you.
That's fine, that's great. I mean, I understand, you know, we're talking about, you know, the process. It, it doesn't make a difference on, on, on if we're going out for the garbage contract or the um, you know, the IT contract. It is the process. So the process. We just did the process the same with the genitorial service. So for you to to, to say, okay, I, I get that, but what's your questions? What questions do you have for the IT company? He's here. Right, right now, the, the actual proposal is before you. You have seven other uh companies that actually put in for the IT proposal, which was, they hundred thousand dollars up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in some of those instances. And Mr. Barlow, for the same exact thing, he's able to do for, with, well within our budget. So, you know, put those questions before me. I'll bring it back before you guys on November the sixteenth. And we'll move forward. I don't wanna keep beating, it's, it's, we're trying to win together, not apart.
I'm good.
I just doing stuff willy-nilly. Believe me, I'm talking to the treasurer, I'm talking to the clerk, I'm talking to the uh, to, to, to the attorney about anything that I'm doing before I put it before you to make sure I'm doing it the correct way. It's not, I'm just not grabbing this stuff off the sky, just doing stuff. So when stuff is presented to you, it's presented because I'm getting it from the administration and working to put it before you how we done it in the past. Now, we need to correct what we've done in the past, let's do that and move these things forward.
Good.
Alright, so the maker of the motion, I'm just asking, let's go ahead and just table this so I can get you all the references that you asked for. You asked for references, what else did you ask for? I heard references, what else did we ask for?
Yeah, we had asked how much he's paid so far.
Right, okay, so you wanna bill for, you want him to bill you for, from now, he started on October the nineteenth until now, which, you know, we don't wanna go above. Again, we know that the, the process is five thousand dollars a month. For a whole contract, so we don't.
Yeah, just, just wanna, um if I could, just one point of clarification. Um so, and and the city attorney can, can speak to this uh as needed or anyone else. So, under the purchasing policy, the city's purchasing policy, um the five thousand dollar figure is for funds that have not been appropriated. Um so, from, from that standpoint, I don't, I don't believe we run up, run up to the five thousand dollar figure, but that's kind of from an administrative standpoint, that's kind of how we approach it. Um if the monies have already been appropriated, we do have the authority to go uh up to and above that five thousand dollar figure um and engage services uh as such. And so sometimes I, I think sometimes there's some confusion. Um because of the fact that we're not asking for any additional funds, we're gonna be using funds that have already been appropriated. Um given that we are trying to be transparent, but that specific um regulation in the city's purchasing policy does not apply in that sense, that there, that there's some, some type of specific limit. I know we've had that issue in the past, but it was specifically related to whether or not funds had or had not been appropriated.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do, do we have a, we have a timeframe with them or? I think somebody asked the question.
They've been, they've been great, they've been gracious and been working with me, you know, ever since Mr. Cody left, really, you know, we've been trying to assess what we need to do and you know, what direction we need to go in. So, um, you know, I'm just trying to, again, bring them aboard so we can get them, you know, get them paid and we won't have, you know, we, we just won't have them hanging in limbo, you know. So we did the RFQ process and it was out there for about two weeks. We pulled it, I'm bringing it now to the council. This is, you know, who we're recommending that we go with because, you know, to be, to be honest, they're excellent. And I'm looking forward to working with them.
What I'm saying is that how long are we gonna keep them for that year or two years?
Oh, gotcha. No, this is, you know, really, go, go, you know, I, I, you know, my approach was a year, each year we redo it, you know? Now, um.
So that's what I'm saying. If, if it's a year, if it's a year, if it's a year, we can go with the year. I'm fine with that. We gotta do something right now before it gets too late. And then in the late midnight hour, then we, we saying this and that has happened in our police department and in our fire department. So I don't even know if there's a motion even on the floor.
I don't think so. I don't think anybody made the motion. Um.
Oh, okay. Okay, so what do we wanna do?
Mister, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, I'd like, I'd like, before you, before mo- motion is out there, I'd just like to talk with my colleagues and all of us, and I know this shouldn't, this is not really the right time to do this, but this is what we're trying to do. Everybody's trying, everybody has the same goal. We're trying to move the city forward, but we have to have transparency. We can't know, I mean, just like my uh election night, you know, Felicia called me, the phone system went down. How, I, I didn't know who to call, I called Jerome. But if somebody is in our systems, Mr. Mayor, I'm thinking you should, I mean, even though you have the daily operations, but council needs to know these things. And, and everything is like backdoor dealing, it seems like. And I'm not faulting you because, you know, you could, could have said. But wait, hold up, hold up, hold up. But no, but what I'm saying is, when you talk to us about it, cuz me and you have meetings, nothing was ever said that they were already in our system. Nothing was said, Mr. Mayor, but you have the daily. But, but wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I'm not blaming you for anything. I'm just trying to get everybody on the same page.
Okay.
So we won't have these. But what I mean, when I say backdoor, but, but that, that's to me, and I don't know who, I can speak for myself. If somebody's doing something and we are the body and we don't know, that's hard. I mean, this is like the second time stuff has happened in the city of Inkster and we the last people to know. So we have to move forward, but we have to, we have to be transparent and we have to be verbal. We have to let people know, even though you run the daily operations, but we still need to know. We still need to know what's going on, you know? We're not saying that you're doing anything bad, but not telling us, it kind of looks bad. But we still need to know this. If we have to move money, we have to pay somebody, we need to know this.
Well, you don't have to, the policy, you didn't, you don't have to. That's an administrative point.
Okay, that's an administration, but but if we had, but what was the secrecy then? Why we didn't know that? Nobody knew on this council board that IT, somebody was already in our systems. I mean, even if we hadn't known that and Felicia hadn't known that, she could have called them and said, hey, my phone system is out.
Felicia called me directly.
Well, she called me and I called Mr. Bivens, okay, because she, she gotta have, have an answer right then. She's in, you know, she's in, you know, she's running the election. So she just dialing, I mean, whoever picked up the phone first, I should say. But at the same time, we knew that we could have dealt with it. That's what I'm saying. It's nothing that you did wrong, but you have to tell us so we won't look like idiots. You know what I'm saying? That's where we, that's all I'm saying, Mr. Mayor. I'm not saying that you doing anything wrong, but we just let us know. So if something comes up, one of us will know something. Cuz we didn't know anybody was working in the system. We just walked around and said we didn't have anybody. And that was wrong on our part because there was somebody in the systems and we didn't know it.
Troy has been our point person since Mr. Phineas Cody left and we, everybody.
We didn't know that. I didn't know that. Did, did anybody on council know that?
Yeah, I knew.
I didn't know that. No, I didn't know that. Well, anyway, but go ahead, go ahead. Y'all go ahead and do what y'all gotta do. Just go ahead and do what you gotta do. I'm done.
I like, I like to make a motion. We'll, we'll be all night discussing. I like to make a motion that that we, we go with this, this, this company here and Mr. Mayor, would you forward all the information on this company to the rest of the council people? That's my motion. We go over the contract.
Support. Been moved and properly supported. Any more discussion?
Mayor, bef- before we go further, can I just add?
Please go here.
A- as you know, this morning I got an email from uh Ms. Glover with the proposal from Nerds Express and turned around just to speak to Mr. Chisholm's concerns that the proposal as I received it outlined the broad terms of the agreement for Nerds Express, but I then drafted an actual contract that spanned about six pages, which outlines the terms that Mr. Member Shaw was inquiring about. It's a year term to start on Sunday in November to end on the last day of October of next year with a year option for the city, at the city's discretion. And again, it has the termination for the city's convenience clause in it that we like to include in all contracts.
I sent it back to to you and uh Ms. Glover at around two, and I thought you forwarded it to council around that same time today, around two thirty, at least I gotta. I I'm just letting you know the terms of the contract and I sent it back to you this afternoon and I thought you forwarded it to council this afternoon.
I did, I did, I did forward it to council and I did just forward it back again to council.
I'm Mister Chair, I think it was a mistake, you forwarded the proposal again, I just got the one from Attorney Jones at seven thirteen this evening, I did not have that document.
You got two for the, for the proposal?
No. I got proposal for RFP that they submitted, then I got from you at two o'clock, the same exact thing, and then the one that just came through was the one that Attorney Jones drafted.
No, I I don't think I sent it to you tonight.
No, you didn't. Right, so that's what I was saying, I didn't have it in front of me, all I had was two proposals, I didn't have the third one that the city had acted on.
Yeah, and I know you hadn't seen it, that's why I'm just chiming in to let you know some of the terms that were included and to address Member uh Shaw's concerns about the terms as well, because because it was clear you hadn't seen it.
Yeah, and I want to give the opportunity, and I think again, November the sixteenth is not, is not far away, I just know that we have a lot of business on November the sixteenth. Because we didn't do any business the day before the election um this past Monday, on November the second. So know that we will have a long meeting, I'm just trying to keep meetings down as much as we can, but we have a lot of business to do in the city of Inglester, and that's a good thing.
But but Mister Mayor, my my motion, my motion was that you forward all the information to them, okay? I don't see no reason why we need, we're not giving them but a year contract, I don't see no reason why we got to hold them up. And they've been good to us, they they actually have been been holding things down, you know, and and I don't feel like we should just sit here tonight and just say, hey, you know, we're we're gonna hold this up, okay? You know, it doesn't make no sense, the man on the line, the man strained us, what 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 he was gonna sit here and he's gonna give us all this different things and he's qualified. I mean, I'm paying all the testimony and stuff like that, but I I still, I'm still putting in my motion that you forward all the paperwork, information, all of the the references and stuff to the council that needed it. But we don't, we, I don't feel we need to wait till another meeting before we, you know, put this on there, drag it out. And and I hope that, I hope that wh- what what Councilman Howard, I am not trying to, for Councilman Howard's indicated, we spare from now on, we just try to make sure when we got something, that all the information go to each of us.
Yeah.
Because I mean, from now on, we do, we need to do that, we need, we need to stay abreast on on a lot of things that's going on, you know?
So to, so to get this correct, I'm sorry, did I, I mean, interrupt. So to get this correct, we are paying them what Phineas was getting paid yearly. But there'll be additional seven to eight people and one person um in the city hall Monday through Friday, correct?
Correct. This is an IT company, but we will have a actual physical body here every day representing the company to deal with support.
And he did say twenty-four hours, so if anyone have issues after business hours, it'll be a ticket type of process.
It's all encompass, it's all in the encompassed into the sixty thousand dollars, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, uh roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
No.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have three A's and three N's.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let's get off into public participation, this brings us to um time of our meeting for public participation. Uh, we're asking that uh that each member um say your name, uh I'm sorry, each participant say your name. Uh, for the record, also to that you stay within the one minute. All right, Councilman Chisholm, if you don't mind, giving folks instructions so we can move forward, please.
For those who have dialed in on our meeting tonight, please press star nine from your handset. Um, the number uh, the meeting ID is eight three five five one two four nine one nine five. But please press star nine to raise your hand to be recognized, and also for those who might be joining us uh via video, just use this um raise hand icon to raise your hand to be recognized, and we do have one at this time, Mister Mayor.
All right, then please state your direct name for the record and your comment.
Hi, yes, my name is uh Bartholomew Jenkins, I want to state two things. I want to state that Mayor Patrick Andre Wimberly owes three thousand dollars in taxes and he refuses to pay the three thousand dollars that he owes in back taxes. The second thing that I wanted to say is that Councilmember Watley's daughter owes six thousand dollars in back taxes. She works for the city and has not paid, and I believe that the city should garnish a little bit out of Mayor Wimberly's paycheck and also Councilwoman's Watley's daughter's paycheck until that debt is paid off, thank you.
Thank you Bartholomew for your comments, Mister, AKA Mister Blackwell, all right. Do we have any other?
Doesn't look like we do, Mister Mayor, I don't see any other handles there.
All right, let's move right on, City Treasurer.
Uh, no comments, sir, thank you.
All right, well, City Treasurer, you know, I mean, I know that tomorrow's kind of officially your last day. Um, and you're going over the Pontiac and you got a big old raise and you're leaving me over here all by myself.
You weren't supposed to tell I'm a businessman, put me up there like that, but I I I.
Congratulations, congratulations, man, you know, I really wanted to just say publicly to you that uh, you know, since I've been in office, man, you've been uh more than a treasurer, you've been a confidant. Um, you truly have guided me and 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 given me, you know, real, true, solid um advice and 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 recommendations. And and you know, to be honest, man, you you stood up for me in in different instances, and I really appreciate that, and 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 I applaud you for the services that you have uh, you know, given to the city of Inglester for the last three years. And uh, we're definitely gonna be losing a a great asset to to the community, but I know that, you know, just for for the community. You know, I know we have a game plan, you know, it sometimes don't seem like that, and I want to make sure, you know, like you say, you know, we're being transparent across the board, so um, if you could just speak to that just a little bit for me, I really would have.
Sure, and I and I did um on Monday, man, I did um, you know, express my thanks to uh, to everyone, the administration, I didn't want to take up time and 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 say that, but uh, I will just again commend, you know, commend the people of this community, because they are um, very, very supportive regardless of who's in office and who's not in office, you know, these folks step up time and time again and um uh, you know, that's that's something that's that's very special, and I know you guys understand and appreciate that, so um and as as the mayor alluded to, we um, and I think uh, this information's been provided to council uh earlier, but we have um identified. Are we ready to to provide the name publicly, uh Mister Mayor?
Uh, you know, I I don't know, that's probably, is that a David question, I mean, because uh, we do have an agreement that we have to have him sign first, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure where we are, but we we um, uh, you know, we we are in the process of of um getting an interim treasurer uh in place, um, from a transparency standpoint, the mayor um has vetted a number of candidates and he um has uh identified this person, he'll, he's communicated to the person that he will be taking a a lar- a larger look and uh, hasn't had the opportunity to post the position, but he will be doing that, um not sure exactly what, you know, to what extent that process will go, how far that process may or may not go based on the on the responses, but um you know, uh, an individual has uh been identified, he's been working with the city attorney to get him in place. I'll be working with that individual from a transition standpoint um over the next several weeks and um you know, certainly will be available, um, you know, even though I will be in an in another role with another community, I certainly will be available to make sure, um, you know, whatever follow-ups or or anything that needs to be done, we're we're gonna make sure that the um operations uh are, you know, continue on smoothly, that we don't have any interruptions. So whatever needs to be done, um, I'll make sure we uh, we take those steps.
Again, man, just thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Um, City Clerk?
Mayor, I have no comments, I'm sleepy.
I get a bad, great job, City Clerk, great job, kudos. You know, kudo, I know you were here, you've been going, you know, thank you so much. Um, you know, for everything that you you do for our community and, you know, just to the citizens overall, I mean, ten thousand votes in the city of Inglester. Definitely a game changer, gotta keep the momentum up, thank you so much, City Clerk. All right, uh, going around, Mayor, Council, Council, anybody?
I like Mister Mayor, I just want to piggyback on what you just said, um, I think she did an excellent, excellent job and the poll workers did an excellent job. I'm not sure, Felicia, can you tell everyone how long you guys were there?
Uh, we were there from five thirty AM on Tuesday morning until about three o'clock on Wednesday afternoon.
Good job.
Yep.
That's all I have to say, good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, Councilman Shaw, let's just go down this, Councilman Shaw?
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chair, uh, it it was made mention about the uh town hall for the marijuana situ- uh situation, now, are we gonna have that, is that gonna be coming forward or before the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm I'm actually gonna be conducting the town hall, so I'm gonna, I'm 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 looking for, I was actually gonna get on David in a little bit because uh, Harry uh called me yesterday and told me he had an information for us today as it relates to all the ordinances and that, so about tomorrow I should have those things and shout out to you all. And then I'll I'll make a date, because I'm just gonna basically do, again, a town hall where the administration will be presenting to the the whole community. Um, in a webinar format, so it won't be necessarily um a meeting that'll be called from the the council.
Now, I know I didn't talk to you ahead of time uh before I put you on the on 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 Front Street with this uh the state of the city, are you going to have a state of the city?
Yes, of course, yeah, so we're definitely working on that right now, um, we were looking um to, you know, after the election to have something, so it'll be probably the first of of the year, and uh we'll be moving forward on that.
Okay, and also with the um uh, city calendar, how are we doing with that and we are we promoting the city calendar because we need to raise some funds?
Uh, we've already, Rhonda, Rhonda Glover, um, my executive assistant in my office, has uh taken that um, on this year, along with support of uh City Clerk and a number of the other department heads. And um, they, the funds have already been raised already, uh Darren, I don't know if you know exactly the number, I know it's at least over four thousand. It's been raised for the calendar and the draft is actually on my desk right now, it's complete. Um, so we'll be going out with that, the the calendars will be out this year before uh Christmas, hopefully.
Okay, all right, that that's all I have right now, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay. All right, Councilman Chu?
Hey, yeah, just thank you to our City Clerk and all the clerks across the nation, I participated in a support rally today outside of Westland City Hall. Where they were uh pretty much giving Clerk LeBlanc his thanks, and I made sure that when I spoke, I did bring up our clerk and the amount of hours. I know at one point in time, they had reached about thirty hours that they had not left City Hall, they were on a a absolute lockdown. So, when we were out there, what we were basically doing was promoting, count every vote. We did get some naysayers that drove past us and told us that we were cheating, now however, they don't know what our political affiliations are to say that we were cheating. All we said is count every vote, because in our city, we count every vote. And whether you win or whether you lose, every vote was counted, that's all you need to know, so thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you. Team that helped assisted her in this process and we just pray for the best of whatever the outcome may be, and that's all I have.
All right, so thank you so much, Councilman Washington?
Just wanted to say thank you um as well to the City Clerk and her staff um, for how how hard you guys have worked, um, a lot of the residents said that the process went smoothly. So, uh, really appreciate all the dedication that you have put into this election uh day, as well as you know, we should definitely uh give a clap to all the Ingle residents, because we had a historical amount of votes today. I mean, on election day, over ten thousand votes, so I just wanted to uh also say um, great job, City of Ingle residents, um, and great job also to the City Clerk and her staff as well.
Thank you, Councilman Washington, Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, following up with the uh town hall, I would, um I'm asking if there's any, um have you given any thought to this not being a second reading on the sixteenth? Since this has gone through so many uh reincarnations, until it's kind of hard to know what the actual one is. And since we haven't gotten the information from Harry yet, is there any way we can have a first and second reading again, so because it's gonna be kind of hard to have a second reading on something you never had a first reading on, because it's so different.
Yeah, and I think it's actually two things that's happening, Councilwoman Wiley, and and I'm definitely, I'm I definitely understand wh- what you're saying, just because, uh, you know, again, because it's being such a hot button issue. We didn't give it a chance to come out of planning before we start talking about it as a council. So, you know, the council kind of put the cart before the horse, so now that it came out of planning on uh Monday the twenty-sixth. You know, we had a meeting the twenty-seventh, we talked about it, we we finalized everything as relates to the council. We want to make sure that we bring that information back to you, I know that we had a first reading as it relates to the um micro businesses um already, um, but I'm, you know, I'm I'm up to what this body wants to do again. You know, this is about um the city, not about one individual or any, uh, you know, anything else, it's about the city as a whole. So, i- if that pleases the body, let's definitely do that, and I would definitely consider that.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree, I mean, we we want to make sure that it comes out to the Pl- Planning Department so that we can look at what the Planning Department talked about.
Yeah, but that that's kind of, we were, we've been talking about the marijuana issue on the council before it even came out of planning. And again, we put the cart before the horse, it didn't come out of planning until the twenty-sixth, so that's why, you know, when Councilwoman Wiley say we have so many different variations. The council never really had any different variations, because we never had the recommendation from the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission voted on the twenty-sixth, it came out. Say one more time, Mayor Proton?
Say now, I'm not sure if anybody else got it, it's just coming from my end, I'm not sure.
What's that, what what did you need to know?
Oh, no, no, I I mean, you was talking, but you was in and out, so I didn't know.
Chappy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I was just saying. As it relates to the different variations, Councilwoman Wiley was alluding to as it relates to the marijuana ordinance. It hadn't came out of Planning Commission as of yet, but the council was already talking about it in previous council meetings.
Okay, okay.
The planning recommendations didn't come out until the twenty-sixth, which we know that the Planning Commission is where we get our recommendations from. And they had a public hearing at Planning Commission, and then it comes before the council for uh considerations through first and second reading when we're talking about changing any uh or- or- or zoning. So, I I would consider what this body would want to consider, but I know that it's going to be a first reading um, for the um, the the business license and the process of that. Um, also the zoning, it'll be the first reading for that, um, it'll be the first reading for the the three dispensaries that uh currently exist now and coupling them with the medical and the recreational. Um, and then also too, Harry's put some more um language in there as it relates to uh, hearing from uh the council and Councilman Williams in particular, as it relates to uh caregivers in the community growing marijuana and having some type of licenses for them, so that would definitely be a first reading on that, and then we will have a second reading after that. So, I I'm with you, whatever which way you want to do it, Councilwoman Wiley, we can, we can work that out as long as we're staying within the law.
I'm I'm with it too, I'm with it too.
We want to give everybody as much information as possible, let everybody chime in as much as we can, and this is not, we're not just gonna be talking about this issue just now. This issue is an issue that we need to talk about and continue to talk about, just because it, you know, ultimately it is what it is. Just like you saw on Tuesday, four other states have become legal with marijuana. And um, we know that depending on where the presidency lies, that our folks and 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 those on on each side are talking about legalizing marijuana for the entire country, so um, we're gonna be talking and hearing more about. So um, we're gonna be talking and hearing more about marijuana, unfortunately, is just what it is. So, uh, Councilwoman Wiley, back to you. Um, I'm I'm willing to do whatever, you know, is necessary for the community, so I'm I'm okay with that as long as it's legal.
Well, we can check with David about that, but I really believe because there are things in there that weren't originally, such as that caregiver's growth facility. That was not in the original, speaking of it, even back in August when we were talking about it. So this is something new, and like I said, there are so many different spots till in order to keep that transparency, I think the citizens ought to be or or even us, because what's coming to us now may not necessarily be what we said. You said Harry's writing, he's pairing the recreational, but they're not limiting the recreational. So there's a lot of things in there that are additional that no one has seen before. So, once again, I would like to see that, and I hope my colleagues would like to see it just for the sake of transparency. And I would like to get that information prior to whenever your town hall is, too.
Yeah, for certain. And then let me say this, this, the the reason why Harry is even doing that is because his body asked him to do it. So, you know, he's saying like this is the first time you're hearing about it or something that, you know, it seemed like, you know, and I'm trying not to take it to where it's like you know, I'm doing something, I'm just trying to uh set a business license process in place that was never done. When we opted into the program, whether it was adult use or not, we've never had a business license process. So with everything else coming on with the state, we have to address the issue. So I'm not trying to in particular do something. I'm trying to hear what the community is saying. There's a lot of different moving parts, there's been a lot of misinformation out there. And hearing it from the administration and giving it to the council, then the council saying what they need to say, and then us putting it together and formulating, then voting on it and making it into law. So I want to make sure I get you all that information. You have it as soon as I get it.
Right, and you being a businessman know that things of this nature, the language has to be specific.
Correct.
In order for it to uh be enforceable. And that's all I'm saying at this point. A lot of things that are being said are not necessarily um um honoring the intent, so.
Okay, all right, ma'am. Do you have anything else for us?
Nope, that would be it.
All right then, and Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I'd just like to, um, I I would hope I'm gonna continue to re- remind you and the uh uh Mr. Vivins on the uh the speed bump, uh come up with some remedies that we the people still complaining about that, so I'm just gonna keep reminding you of of that.
Yes.
Uh another thing that um that I want to bring up, I want to commend uh the mayor and um and and Vivins, uh, we had a project over there that people have been complaining about for seven, eight years about the uh the um in intersection going in, a walkway becoming a roadway. And uh I want to thank the mayor and and Mr. Vivins for a job well done. Okay, we, I think we kind of, kind of, we, the sign that we put up there, uh, I think we kind of solved that problem. Uh, and I appreciate it because I got a lot of people s- with uh responding back to that, saying that they appreciate what we've done. Okay, then we still left left room and stuff for the uh D P uh D P E can get through there. So that's one of the things here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, where are we at on the um uh on the um, the the battered woman situation uh that we talked about, uh locating it? The location for that, where are we at on it? I don't, I haven't heard anymore about it.
You said battered woman?
Well, you called it better with the children, uh.
Oh, you're talking about the Family Resource Center, the Naomi Jones Family Resource Center? Yeah, so 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 right now, Harry um is working with attorney from um that side as it relates to the 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 purchase of the property. We had an assessment um from the assessor's office, the the property assesses that over in that area, it's at seventeen thousand dollars per acre, which, you know, of course, we want to triple that value um as it relates to the state equalized value. So um, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for um five acres in that area to present it to council. Then, of course, council say yea or nay. So um, we should be having that before you within the next uh next council meeting or so.
Okay, um, I I I had some uh areas in there that I mentioned to you also about uh really need to come down. Couple houses and really in the in the community is a hazardous and it need to come down is and it's impossible, we can't and no way nobody can fix them up.
Good. If you could send me an email with those addresses, I am working with the community now.
On it, but you know, I showed you one right down Ludin- Ludington.
Yes, yes, we we are familiar with that.
It's got halfway wood around and then it's vacant, you can see all through it.
Yes.
One on half and then uh ch- uh charity that we talked about, you said we had enough money that we would do them.
Yes, yes, sir. I did put those on the list for the Community Development Block Grant for the demolition program. So we're working on those right now.
Okay, I'd just like to also mention, Mr. Mayor, somehow that when you meet with the chief and stuff like that, and I know, I know, w- we don't have that many cars on the road, but over in my area, we really need to get some patrol cars over that way for the speeding up down the street and colliding, making a drag strip out of it. We really need to put some, some uh
Working on your speed bumps and also too, we're working on your electronic signs that you had asked us about.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we're definitely working on that. So the with, as it relates to the speed bumps, um, you know, I think that's that's all over the community. So um, we had to go to the state because, you know, frankly, the city doesn't have any money in the general fund to be able to um to do that. So we had to look at um our Act fifty-one money for our roads, and we did get approval to do speed bumps, but the speed bumps had to be they have to be permitted. So um as we're looking at doing um our streets, and of course, we have to do infrastructure as well. Um, we're looking, you know, what's most feasible um for the budget as it relates to the Act fifty-one money and um, you know, how we can actually, you know, identify the, well, not how we can, the police department has already identified for us um those areas that have been really problematic. So we're gonna start in those areas and 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 you'll you'll see that happening within the next hopefully within the next month or so as it relates to a proposal coming before the council with those streets and then, of course, the cost.
Well, I would appreciate it if, in fact, if you're gonna put some speed bumps down there in my district, I appreciate that they do contact tech, contact me in my district. I think I know really where they need to really go.
Uh, you please, send me a, send me an email with those streets and I'll definitely forward those over.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, everyone, just for the sake of time, we do have a closed session item. Um, City uh uh City Attorney, and I apologize, City City Attorney. Um, if you could please state for the record what it is.
We have a closed session. I'm on the I A F F contract with the firefighters. Uh, and that's it.
Okay, motion to go into closed session, please.
Don't move.
This is pork. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember William?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley? Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm. We have six A's. Councilmember Chisholm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I thought you had to leave, I think. Had to leave early.
We have five A's, Mayor.
All right then, we're gonna go into uh closed session now. Uh, David, should we bring in um should we bring in the the fire chief or the uh guys from the?
Yeah, you can bring in the fire chief, but before we do go in, uh, Mayor, is everyone still out?
Got a couple of people joined in already.
Okay, all right, we can go.
Okay, so the fire chief and what about the union representation? Uh, Troy, let's bring in the fire chief and Eric, I believe Eric is on here as well.
Okay, Eric Marer? I'm here, I'll send him in.
Thank you. Hey, Troy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good, we're back in general session. Okay, and and I just want to apologize, uh uh and the whole of council is actually coming back out of closed session right now. We didn't do any business. Um, unfortunately, because Councilmo- Councilman Chisholm um left, we don't have a full complement of council, and this is a special meeting. So unless it's on the agenda, we can't address it. So it just seemed like it's one thing after the other. So we're gonna, we're going to um as it relates to um the the business that we need to conduct, we'll conduct that at uh the November sixteenth meeting for uh City Council. So at any rate, uh call for adjournment? Motion to adjourn. All right, is there support?
Support.
All right, all the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.